I'd like to call the meeting to order for October 13th, 2020. Please rise for the invocation by Ms. LeBlanc.
This weekend, I watched a documentary on Michelle Obama and I was very inspired by her tenacity and her courage and her grace in the White House. And some of her quotes resonated with me. And I thought that this would be appropriate for our students due to the recent events in the United States. Don't ever underestimate the importance you can have because history has shown us that courage can be contagious and hope can take on a life of its own. At this time, let's say a special prayer for our families that are fighting breast cancer this month due to it being Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Amen? Pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America. Thank you, Ms. LeBlanc. Fire evacuation, we have one exit out the rear of the chambers, out the door into the parking lot. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mr. Ryder?
Here.
Mr. Salazar?
Here.
Mrs. Thurston? Mr. Ungary?
Here.
Mrs. Costa? Mrs. Hall?
Here.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Here.
Chairman Cruzel?
Here.
Thank you.
Pertaining to Ms. Costa, it's happened that she she submitted her resignation effective today, last Friday. So I have a little letter from her here. Last week Wendy Costa submitted her resignation from the Board of Ed effective October 13th. Oh, wait a minute, that is the wrong letter. Oh, this became mandatory when she was presented with an opportunity of a lifetime and will no longer be a resident of Enfield. We will follow the normal process for replacing Wendy as soon as possible. And then I just have one more statement before we go pertaining to wearing of masks. Based on comments made last meeting and although our actions were in perfect compliance with state mandates in this setting, we decided that in order not to distract from the business at hand and for continuity purposes, that we wear masks during the meeting while we are not speaking. So with that, we will continue with the agenda. Board guests, we have none. So we will continue with superintendent's report, Mr. Dreszek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I promise I'll be much briefer than I was last week. But I thought it was an opportunity that one bright spot from this process over the last several months is we've noticed is that it appears that we have quite the viewing audience at home. So we're trying to utilize meetings such as this or even when we are meeting remotely to shed, to get out as much messaging as we can, not only for the board, but for the, for the general public that are watching at home. So I wanted to take the opportunity why I had everyone's attention again is to bring, shed a little bit of light. I know a lot of people question about some of the information that we use when it comes to making school level decisions. And I know a lot of people will pay attention to updates either from the governor's office or from the state health departments about transmission rates and all those numbers surrounding COVID. But I wanted to draw everyone's attention to what is actually relevant for us to make decisions regarding school closures or openings or whatever type of level we're going to be opening again. So if you recall back from the summer when the state issued their official guidelines, and that's the guidance we all refer to and all the addendums that we've been talking about since the summer. The real addendum that you need to pay attention to is the leading indicator. So there's, the state has given us three indicators, leading and secondary indicators of infection levels in order for districts to make decisions on whether to have in-person classes, hybrid classes, or fully remote classes. And you could see that they're color coded and it's all in the, the original plan that the state submitted to us back in June. As you can see, the leading indicator that the state actually uses, it's what's called new COVID cases per 100,000 population per day and a seven-day average. I bring that to your attention because a lot of times we'll hear about what the daily transmission rates are. And as you probably noticed today, it obviously jumped up a little bit higher than it has been in recent days and in recent weeks. But that's not the actual decision based on the guidance that the state will recommend to us whether we hold in-person classes, a hybrid and/or a complete remote. That's the leading indicator. And on the State of Connecticut's website, this is all public information. And this is part of the routine that we go through on a daily basis is that every week, the state updates these indicators, either the leading indicators or the secondary indicators. Unfortunately, what they don't do, the leading indicators are kind of unanimous amongst the state, the county, and the towns. Some of the secondary indicators aren't for the town of Enfield. So I'm just going to focus on the leading indicator, which is if you have your cases, number of cases per 100,000 population in your area, and I'll explain that in a moment. And that the magic number is 10. So if you hit 10, anything below 10, the state guidance is telling you it's okay to have traditional in-person classes. When you go above 10, from 10 to 25, that's where the state recommends that you go into a hybrid model. And then when you go 25 and above, obviously that's when the state official recommendation would be that you go fully remote. People get confused at times, as do we, when you see the transmission rate at 2.4% like it is today and think, well, we're not even close. You actually have to look at the data that's driven from the state department of health process and then released out to the general public, which I get on a weekly basis just by going to the state website. What I've done, and just to give you a little bit of, and this is all, should all make sense when I'm done, and I promise I won't be 80 minutes again. I, I started this tracking, I have my own database that I use to look at what the numbers are. I look at three different buckets of, of figures. I look at the state data, I look at the county data, and I look at the Enfield data. When the state made the recommendation that we would follow these guidelines when it came to school closures or openings, they did so by county. They didn't do it, now they still left the caveat that each individual district can make up their own decision. For instance, if you've noticed what's happening in New London right now. New London is seeing a spike, they're recommended to go fully online, but there are other surrounding communities that are not making that same decision. We ultimately have the right to do that. But the state's official position on this is looking at the, the, the leading indicator, which is that 100, cases per 100,000, per county. And the reason they settled on per county was because a lot of us are intertwined. Take Enfield as an example. We send Enfield students to other programs within Hartford County. We take students from our Project Choice that are Hartford residents into Enfield. So it made more sense, there was a lot of discussion about doing it through Demus areas, which we would be in another area more in the Talon group. But ultimately, the state settled on looking at that numbers per county. What that means is when you take that leading indicator, whatever that number is, and it's dis segregated by county, that would trigger that county to make a unified decision on what they should or should not be doing for school openings and closings. The other thing that's important for people to understand is the reporting periods for this information and the reporting dates are old. Now, they're not that old, but they're older than what we would like. For instance, I mentioned that information came out, comes out typically on Mondays. So when the information's out on the website and you could check this for yourselves, I went back, just for the purposes of this evening, just to look at some of the trends. I started August 1st because that's when we really started to have to make decisions about opening the school year. So the reporting period for that first data point that I looked at was the reporting period from August 2nd through August 8th. But that information for that reporting period wasn't made available until August 13th. So a full five days after that reporting period is done. So when we're talking about this, and I'm showing you guys numbers shortly, and I promise there's only three other slides. But when, you have to take that into consideration that the data points that we have on here right now are essentially a week and a half to two weeks old. So the most recent reporting period that I have that I can share tonight that I just got this week is from 9/27 to 10/3. And if you recall, that was the period of time when we had to make the decision as to what we were going to do for this coming Monday. Just to put in perspective, I would have had to make that decision during that time period. But when I made that decision on the 24th, the information that I had as far as real health data was for the period of 9/13 to 9/19. So I was still almost a week and a half behind when I had to make that decision. I'm putting that in context of what we're being asked to do is to forecast what's going to happen with a disease that we don't have much control over. But I thought it was good for you guys just to understand some of the mindset that goes into some of these decisions. So looking at the first indicator, we start with Enfield. I wanted to put it in a, in a, in a line graph for you just to show the trajectory. So when you look back to when we start, our starting point on 8/20, our indicator number was .3, which was great. And that's when we started talking about making decisions about how we were going to open school. Unfortunately, what we were being told was expect those numbers to increase. But we didn't have any raw data to actually say they were going to increase. We do now, but as I said, we are still lagging behind by almost a week, in some cases, two weeks. But if you just to look, our numbers went from the beginning of August to .3 all the way up to what this final number here is, is 3.9. So in the scheme of things, Enfield as a community, as of October 3rd, is our, our official number on record with the state is only 3.9. That's how many cases we have per 100,000 residents in Enfield. That's great if we lived on an island. The next slide I want to show you is the State of Connecticut. And I did this backwards, I'm sorry. When you look at the State of Connecticut, that same time period, as we started at .3, the State of Connecticut actually started at 1.8. And that's how, that was their leading indicator number. Going back for the same, the most recent period we can report on, which is 9/27 to 10/3, that number has now increased to 6.8. Reasons I wanted to show you a, a line graph is because you can see the line is not going in a direction that any of us are hopeful for. And lastly, but what's the most important number is Hartford County. And when we started this process, when I, just in this data set, we were at 1.3 to begin. Hartford County right now, again, the, the last date that it was updated was October 8th, is trending at 7.8%. So when you look at the numbers, just raw data that we're getting from the State of Connecticut, and this is all on the state's website, I can give you the web link if you want to go. You can go on and disaggregate it any way you like. You could look at state, you could look at county, you could look at per town, you could look per week, you could look any way you like. The one thing you can't do is get anything more recent than what I have right on here. It doesn't get updated until the fall, till, typically it'll be updated on Monday because of the holiday, it wasn't updated till today. I tell you that because when I had to make the decision at the last meeting, which was two weeks ago, and I made the commitment to the community that that first week of October, we would decide what our fate was going to be on October 19th. Unfortunately, the data we had to use, or I had to use at that particular day, was from September 13th through September 19th. And at the time, our county numbers were only 4.8, which still puts us well within the range to hold in-person classes. The state numbers during that same time period were a little lower at 4.3. And Enfield's numbers during that time period were 3.2. So all things considered, although we were starting to trend up, it was still controllable and manageable. The reason that I bring this up to you now is this isn't the only data point that we look at when we try to predict what's going to happen in the future. We have to look at a number of things. A, obviously, this is a weekly download that we get from the state that shows the, the reporting periods. We also, just like everyone else at home, pay very close attention every day at 4 o'clock to either see the tweet from the governor's office, or if you're near a television to put it on, to find out what our daily transmission rates are. And obviously, the governor reports other information to the public, not just transmission rate, but hospitalizations increasing, which is a secondary indicator for us, which I can share, I didn't put on this, I wanted to keep it with the main one. But also, you know, any COVID-related deaths that may happen over, over a day-to-day period. The other information that we have to look at is information that we have in-house. We actually have an in-house database as well in Enfield that looks not only at just positive cases that we have, but any potential case that we may have. So any staff member or student that we have currently in quarantine, whether they're a direct contact or they were symptomatic and notified us, we have a controlled database in-house that we can keep an eye on how many cases we have or potentially will have. That's also has to go into our decision-making as to whether or not we can conduct school. The other fourth bucket of information that I have to look at, because we are technically being judged in Hartford County, is I have to talk to my colleagues about what their activity is in their, in their communities. I can share with you, each community obviously is different, other communities are larger. But one of the concerning factors that I had when we had, last met two weeks ago was some of the conversations I was having with colleagues in other areas that are still in our county, that their numbers were drastically increasing over a short period of time. For instance, and I won't use anyone specific, one district, and, and there's also the, the, the informal conversation you have with colleagues that you may have a good relationship with. So having a conversation with a colleague whose numbers went from a Friday evening at about 7% to Monday morning to 14%. And they're in our county, having, talking to other, now larger communities that are going from 6% on a Friday evening to 9%. In all likelihood, I'm going to go back to the Hartford, say on the Hartford County number, as of right now, we're at 7.8, but I told you this information is old. It would not surprise me that the next time this information uploads, we're over that 10 per, per 100,000 meter threshold for us to be going back to the original slide, which is the state dictating to us what it is that we need to do. The reason I'm mentioning this, I'm not a prophet or a scientist. But my biggest fear, and I, I think I, I expressed that during my 80-minute discussion last week, was trying to make a decision that's the, what's worse for kids and families? Going in and coming out, going in and shutting down for a long period of time. If we were to take everything I shared with you during the last eight, the last meeting for 80 minutes, all of the contributing factors and the logistical things about dealing with this pandemic in schools, the logistics, the contact tracing, the keeping kids and, and staff members three feet apart, all those things are real that we're living with. If you take, took all of that out, the data would have showed, yeah, you could open, we could open our doors on the 19th. Because at the time, I would have had to make that decision, we were somewhere around 4%. Now, we also have the benefit of hindsight and the experience of living through that and having to deal with the, the real world effects of contact tracing, keeping kids separated, not having the ability to properly social distance with everyone there. But for me personally, the biggest fear was if we go in, I don't want to have to pull the plug and shut them down again. And is it, is it the, the process of bringing our kids back or staying, staying in the, in the current model that we're in with the perspective that yes, we may have to close down intermittently for some point? Maybe it's a day, maybe it's two days, and having that Wednesday is helpful. Or opening schools again, and I think I expressed this, and then having to pull the plug for 14 days because we can't properly do the contact tracing or the spacing out. The other fear that was, that was out there was knowing that although the data that we had was trending and you could see all of the charts that we have are all trending unfortunately in the wrong direction. Having a bit of inside information from other communities as well as, as I mentioned, that database that we have in-house, although thank goodness we don't have more positive cases than we've already had, what we do know is that we have a lot of potential for cases. We have a lot of students and staff members who are either in quarantine or asking to stay home because they've either possibly had exposure to someone as, as them being a direct contact. We've asked staff members and students, and for the most part, people have been fantastic in obliging this, but if you're symptomatic in any way, we're asking people to stay home. And they're doing that. But all of that goes in our database. So we know where every person is. There's a asterisk to that. Those are the cases that we know. What we can't predict is if someone is symptomatic or they're a close contact and either they know and they don't want to share it, or they're not quite knowledgeable of it, we have no way of knowing that. So with the amount of potential issues that we currently have built in our, in our own internal database, in addition to all this information that I'm sharing with you, there was nothing two weeks ago that told me that these trends were going to go down. And as going back to what I said, my original fear was that if we opened up schools five days a week next Monday, this data gets refreshed on Mondays. So in all likelihood, by the time I kept hitting refresh on my computer, kids and teachers would all be in the buildings Monday morning. If this number goes over 10 Monday morning, which again, I'm not trying to be pessimistic about this, but all indicators show that it's going to. If this number does go over 10, and we are going to do what we said we did initially, which is follow the state guidance, and the state guidance would dictate in our county would be over 10, that we would have to be back in a hybrid plan. So as I said, worst-case scenario for me was in welcoming everybody back full-time on Monday, and then Monday night, calling everybody in district and telling them, you're going back to the hybrid tomorrow. That legitimately, in all likelihood, would have happened next week. But I know when we have these conversations about data and you hear from different folks at the state or even from the governor's office, I didn't know if people, as having other conversations with people or people, you know, submitting questions to me about what goes into making this decision. It's not just we see a tweet from the governor's office and say, okay, we're going to stay in a hybrid or go. We actually have to dig into what the numbers are. And this is all coming from the Department of Public Health in conjunction with the State Department of Education. But the reality is, the last data point we have is not until, is, is, is from October 3rd. And October 3rd, our county was 7.8. The other concerning factor I have is if you look at all the different data points, when they do make jumps, they make them about 2%, or two points. So we don't have a lot of wiggle room before we hit that 10 cases per 100,000 threshold. And in all likelihood, that's going to come on Monday. So the, the decision was stay in the plan that we are, and I want to relive it. But that also was a contributing factor to me expressing my opinions last board meeting, a few days earlier than I anticipated. And somebody said, well, how do you know your mind's not going to change? Well, it's because of all the information on these screens, plus the conversations I've had with probably 30 people in other districts about, around, around the county about where this is all going. My hope is that at some of the, one of these lines stop and start going in the other direction soon, and we could start getting back to normal. But I just thought it was, I wanted to be as transparent through this process as I could. And I wanted not just you members of the board and our esteemed audience, but especially those folks who are tuning in at home to have a little bit of insight as to why that we make the decisions that we do. So that said, I'm going to answer one question that I know one of you is going to ask. I think I know who will ask it, but I won't call anybody out. I'm showing you data, I'm showing you lines. One of the questions is going to be, what num, what do the lot, numbers have to be to go back down so we can, you know, go back full-time? The reality is, once this chart stops going that way and starts heading back, back down that way, that's when we're going to start re-engaging the conversations of bringing everybody back together at once. Plus, in addition to all of the reasons I outlined two weeks ago, the challenges that we're having logistically about keeping that, the density of kids and staff members in the buildings. So that said, that will conclude the, my non-80-minute presentation to the board this week. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dreszek. Any questions for the superintendent? Go ahead, Ms. Hall.
How many students do we have in magnet schools this year?
It's around 300 altogether. I don't have a, I, I, I'm sure Kathy's watching and she's probably going to text me in two minutes and tell me what it is. But I, last check, I was, it was over 200, it was between 2 and 300.
And have there been a number of parents indicating that they want to stop remote and come into hybrid?
To my knowledge, we have not seen many. As a matter of fact, we've seen more parents opt to either remain remote. And to be quite honest, I think once we had our first positive case in district, that decision for families was made a lot easier. Just to put in perspective, again, I've tried to be as transparent, nothing's more transparent than talking about my own kids. And my own kids dealt with their first scare, and it is, it's scary. When you, when you're waiting for the phone call, you get the letter, and then you're thinking, am I going to get the call, am I a close contact? But just put in perspective, today was the first day back for my, for my kids after being notified of there being a positive case in their schools. And one of my daughter's classes, she said there is normally six kids in her cohort. Sure, there are eight, obviously eight cohort as well. Her class is usually six. Today, there was two. And my daughter pulled into the high school this morning and realized there was hardly anybody there and asked if she can do a remote day because there was no one in the school. So what we're seeing is more parents are opting to either keep their kids home, particularly in the days after there's a notification that there may be a case there. But we are not seeing a large number of families that are opting in, back into the hybrid, even though we're allowing them to do so on Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Mr. Ungary.
Mr. Superintendent, question about the, the data here that you shared with us. Excuse me. So Hartford County, and I understand that this data is somewhat lagged back a little. Said 7.8, is that, that 7.8 number, that, that, that's a state number, right? You got that from the state?
Got that from the state.
Okay. Then you referenced another number from Enfield, you said 3.9. Did, did you get that from the state or was that from your own data, the own data that you're capturing?
All, all the information on the slides comes directly from the state, state database.
Okay. So, so that leads me to my next, to my question, which is, with regard to Enfield, we have, we have a, a population that's incarcerated in, in, in the prison. Is, is that fed into our town number? If, if, if they have an outbreak in very tight quarters in, in the prison, would that be, first off, is that fed into our number? And then would you, I mean, would that be skewing our number, skewing the average?
It's possible. There are, I don't know that if it's definitively incorporated in our total number. I have had conversations with colleagues that say have large congregant living facilities in their towns. So they're seeing their numbers rise up because of that. My understanding is this is the entire population of the community, which would include the prison population. I don't have a way to disaggregate that information out of it. The only information that's, that's available to us is off of that state website. So it could, it could very well be, I don't know what the population of the prisons are and what their, you know, what their positivity rate is. My assumption is that they're all in that, that figure.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I'll, I'll ask, I'll just add, of course, I'm sure there'll be another question. Obviously, looking at the figures, you know, looking at, you know, the state numbers at 6.8, again, it's backdated a bit. Hartford County, 7.8, and in Enfield, we're at 3.9. So we're actually doing much better than, than what our counterparts would be either in the county and/or throughout the state. That said, there, there have been questions about, okay, well, you know, although the state is saying that you have to look at this by county, what if you don't? What if you say, you know what, the county is over 10, but Enfield's still only at 4? We're going to stay the course. Now, fortunately for us, we're already in the hybrid model and that was the balance, we had to make the decision to stay in the hybrid, knowing that the information was heading there anyway, even though we were a little bit behind. So again, I think, I appreciate that the board's willingness to, to trust in the data because ultimately, we were going to end up there on the date we were back anyway. So we, hindsight, it's actually proving that we made the right decision. But that said, there are still going to be some independent thinkers who think, you know, why would we have to go in the same direction as, as what the state is recommending for this particular category? And there are some that are thinking that. The challenge with that is, that is all, this chart that I left up on the screen intentionally, that's all part of the state guidance. And if we're going to say that we're following the state guidance, which we have been for every aspect of this, then we would have to ring true with, with, with that chart displays as well.
Thank you, Mr. Ungary. Mr. Salazar.
Thank you. Sorry. First of all, I want to commend you for providing this information. It was very informative, certainly clarified a lot of notions that I had. And so I appreciate it. It's actually kind of, I guess disappointing that you now have to turn into a database analyst, right? I mean, is that something that you expected to do nor do we expect you to do? But I, it's a necessity and I appreciate, I'm sure we all do, the fact that, that you've taken this, this role. So my, I have two questions. And one of them is for my personal identification because I'm, I'm still not clear. You, you mentioned the word guidelines, recommendations. And so you stated, I think at the end, and so it's probably the answer to my question, but just to be clear, even if we hit a, the threshold of 10 or we exceeded that threshold, still the decision to open or not open is entirely up to us. There is no state law or executive order that says we have to be in hybrid or closed. Or is that? or is that correct?
Correct. But then we technically wouldn't be following the guidelines, but we do have, we do retain that right if we were to not follow, follow that. So the, yeah, I understand, as I'm saying, I'm realizing I'm making it more confusing. No. The short answer is no. There is no executive order that says you have to follow this. Because again, these were guidelines, these weren't mandates. Now, there are some measures within the guidelines that are mandated. Again, it goes back to that three-foot, six-foot argument that I brought up last week. The guidelines recommend six feet when feasible, but the guidelines also only mandate three feet. So we have been following the guidelines. I know we get questions from parents saying, my kids aren't six feet away. It sounds terrible to say this, because I understand, but they don't have to be. And I'm not saying the answer is good or right, but that's what they told us to do. And this is in the same vein as that. But if we decided, you know what, we're not going to listen to this part, we retain that right, but I don't know what the ramifications of that would be. I know that everybody in our county is, is trying to maintain the consistency with guidelines across the board, including if we do hit this threshold.
Thank you. You clarified it, so it's perfectly clear to me. And then my follow-up question is, you kind of teased us there with, if it starts trending down, but, and then you added, but there's some other factors, right? And you've mentioned them in the past, and I'm aware of what those factors are. But would you at least expect to see that trend for a period of time? In other words, I don't want people to believe, including myself, that, hey, the moment starts trending down, we're going to engage in that conversation. I assume that there's going to be some period of time that you would expect we continue to trend down. Is that a consideration?
Actually, that's a good, yeah, that's actually a great question. I meant to mention that during my, during when I was answering the question I anticipated getting from some of you. I don't think the minute that that, one of these point, point figures go down, that it's all of a sudden going to be, okay, we're now, we're now below, we're just going to open everything up again. I think we're going to need to be cautious. I don't have a definitive time, because there's a lot of factors that will play into that. Obviously, this was brought up last week. You know, are we going to do this until there's a vaccine? The answer is probably no. I mean, I don't know that answer. I'm being completely honest with you. I mean, there's a lot of issues with vaccines. Again, forget about what you're talking about nationally. I know there's a lot of conversations, and it's a polarizing, could be a polarizing topic. But I know from our perspective, you know, we deal with vaccines every year. The families just don't believe in them. And we can even go back personally as a group, that before our shutdown happened in February, we were all contacted by a group asking them to support anti-vaccination legislation. So, you know, the vaccine isn't going to be the end-all, be-all for all this. I think there's a lot of hope in therapeutics. But I think what's going to end up, you know, driving our factors is, as the numbers start to come down, do the trends continue on that? So we can kind of get back to, I'm looking at, you know, that 2% number that we experienced for the first month or so of school as being the norm. I mean, the reality is, this is going to be here. And I think we're all fooling ourselves if we don't think it. We're going to, what we're now is, we're going to learn how to live with this as best we can. I think we're fortunate that although it's not perfect, the model that we're in right now in a hybrid, again, it's the lesser of two. What's worse for kids? It's working as well as it can. We are getting better at it. We are committed to getting better at it. But we also have to come to the realization is, this is going to be our new normal for a little while. And I think as we get more comfortable in how we're, we're delivering this for kids, as we get a better handle on, are the, is this just a spike, or is this how it's going to be for a little while? But if it starts to trend down, and the experts are telling us, you know, we're on the backside of it, although the numbers aren't high, we're not just going to say, okay, forget it, it's over. But we'll start easing our way back into things in a responsible way. But I think, to be honest, I think everyone's concerned about, you know, the next month or two with where these figures are going. So I just, it happened to work out. If I could do anything differently, I wouldn't have picked October 19th as my date to make a decision last time, because that just didn't work out timing-wise, where we knew it was coming, but we really didn't have anything solid. It worked out where the numbers are starting to back up the decision. But, you know, to answer your question as best I can, I want to be truthful with people. Until we start seeing that, a pattern of it being down, and the health experts are saying, okay, we know we're going to have to live with this, we know we're going to have to, this is what our reality is going to be like. But when the numbers get a little too high, we don't have as much control over how we operate. And that's where I go back to the original, the other database I was talking about. We know how many people are out, and is this sustainable with the amount of people who are asking to quarantine, or mandatory quarantine, or were asking to stay out? It's that, it's a balancing act. And it's, and we're going to, we're going to be like that for a while. There might be times where the numbers aren't high, but we know we're getting a group of staff members back, or a bunch of kids are able to come back. It's a, it's a week-to-week basis. We want to give people time to plan, but our decisions are going sometimes week-to-week, sometimes day-to-day.
Well, thank you. I don't have anything further, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Salazar. Any other questions? Mr. LeBlanc.
Mr. Dreszek, how many confirmed cases can you remind me we have in our, or how many confirmed cases have there been in our Enfield public school system?
During this time period, there were 12.
12? Okay.
During the most recent time period.
Okay. So I understand the decisions, or I understand the, the data and the levels are trending upwards sadly. And I respect that any decisions are made based on this data that we're currently viewing and the charts that you provided. But just to offer a ray of hope, given this data, I know, based on the numbers, in Connecticut, 5%, Hartford County itself, 7.8, and in Enfield, about 3, looking at 4%. To offer that ray of hope in our Enfield school system alone, out of about a 5,000-student body population, you're looking at a 0.24% positivity rate. So I'll leave that there, but I just think that offers a little bit of hope to, of encouragement, given that we just looked at three different charts that showed the numbers trending upwards, and percents that also were going upwards. 0.24% is, 0.24% too much, but all in all, out of a 5,000-student body population, I think that's a, that's a ray of hope for the community, for at least on a, on a school system basis.
Anyone else, questions? Ms. LeBlanc.
I was just thinking. So let's say we have students, you know, we have students that could be asymptomatic, that we don't even know have it. Say they have to go into it for a procedure, they come down with a COVID test, they have to take a COVID test before the procedure, because that's standard right now, and then they find out they have COVID. Those types of situations, as far as contact tracing, could be huge, seeing that the student never had symptoms. So I think that sometimes when you're talking about, you know, these charts and different things, that we have to take into effect the contact tracing that goes behind it, and actually, how many people. So we had 12, you know, like confirmed cases, which I guess when we started, I thought we might see a lot more out of the gate. So we had 12 confirmed cases. But wouldn't you, I was, I guess the impact that it has on the district between the amount of teachers and the amount of fellow students has got to be double or triple that, based on the confirmed cases. Because I know that staffing, we've seen in other districts that have had outbreaks or confirmed cases, like staffing becomes an issue. And I don't, I don't want to get into that position, like, I think it was Colchester, they had to close for two weeks because of staffing issues and stuff like that, so.
There was a surrounding town that...
That's always like the, another thing, you know, that we have to think about. But to Mr. LeBlanc's point, I was expecting to see more, but we don't really know what's going to happen coming, you know, we're seeing the numbers rise all across the world again.
And as I said, the key word is like trending down to flat, or trending flat to upward. That's why we're being very cautious. And I think once we start trending down, I don't think we're ever going to get, and when I say flat, I mean, I look at flat being zero, but that's just me. But when we start seeing that trend continuing down, then I think we can get a little bit more, you know, ambitious. I think our goal ultimately is to never get to the red, and to do everything we can to mitigate whether we do get to the red. But to your point, Ms. LeBlanc, you are correct. I don't think any of us, I think we were expecting we would have cases. I think we all had to, and want to be naive and think we wouldn't have them. What we didn't expect is how would we have to react when we do have a case? And in the circumstance that you referenced, you know, it's, there are people who are asymptomatic and get tested for, you know, a myriad of reasons, and then they find, if they were to find out, the challenge for us is we have to go back, we have to pick a start date where we do our contact tracing for. And it's actually noticing contacts. It's not contact tracing. The health department's going to get mad at me. We have to go back 48 hours from when either they tested, the test date, or they were symptomatic, and try to identify anyone who might be a close contact of that person. And while that's happening, although there's 12 that are confirmed and you're doing all that, you also have to factor in that it's cold and flu season. So people are waking up, and they're congested, or they may have a slight fever, and they are doing what we're asking. They're telling, our staff has been remarkable, saying, I don't want to, and we've actually got a lot of staff members who said, I'm fine, I want to come to work, I know you don't want me to, so I'm just going to log in and teach my kids from home. Like, we tried to tell people no in the beginning. Now, the reality is, we didn't have enough staff to cover the building, so we have to do that. But when you factor in either people who are showing symptoms, living with someone who has symptoms, living with someone who is positive, being, I mean, I will say on average, when I say, and I don't have it in front of me, but you can ask the much older Mr. Longy next to me, whether or not my numbers are accurate. We deal with probably eight to 10 new circumstances a day. And I say circumstances, meaning it's not a definite confirmed, but it's, okay, this person's, has a relative who tested positive, or had somebody visiting from out of town who's positive, or is showing every single symptom, or, and it's that process of chasing everything down. So even though you don't have to contact trace, do you have a positive case? What we've learned, especially with school schedules, is if we don't, like for instance, Friday, there was a potential situation that we thought we were having. So the, one of the schools was, okay, do we start trying to get all of our ducks in a row, to figure out who all the potential contact could be now, on the Friday before a long weekend, and then a PD day, and then a remote day? Or do we wait until the actual test comes back and start the process on Monday, which is a holiday? Well, we decided to drop what we're doing, get all our ducks in a row, so if we got that call that there was a positive test, we could start making those notifications instantly over the weekend. Now fortunately, things worked out where we didn't have to do that. But every time you get one of those potentials, it's the legwork on the backend that has to get amplified, because you have to have all your ducks in a row. Because the reality is, if you miss one person, you got to start all over again. And that's where you start to see the 14-day closures and the week-long closures and things along those lines.
I think, and to end with, none of this, of what we're doing is ideal, you know, whether it's hybrid or remote. I just, the one thing, I think, you know, you know, changes can be made, you know, it's tougher on some of the grades, and some of the teachers. I guess it's tough on the families, especially every family's in their own unique situation. But the one thing that I can say I'm proud of as a board member is that we're actually giving the family a choice at this time. Because it's scary for, for families' own reasons, whether they have pre-existing conditions or, or different things like that. So I appreciate the fact that we can, we can give that choice to the families at this time, so. But thank you for your information.
Thank you. Anyone else? You have another question? Go ahead, Mr. Salazar.
Sorry, something, something else that's pretty important that came to mind, and now that you've become a, you know, a database analyst. So one of the unfortunate outcomes, when we had to do the closures in the last semester, it was that some of the students, for various reasons, would, you know, did not participate fully or engage, then we even lost contact with some of them, at least temporarily. Are we keeping track of that this time around? And do you, are there any numbers that you can share with us if in fact, we're seeing some students not participating, not turning in assignments, not logging into their classes when they're online?
I don't have the numbers obviously with me. I anticipate that question. But I do know that we are keeping track, and one of the reasons that we are in a much better position today than we were the last time we did that, quite simply is these things. Because we know now that every, every student has one, and every student has access. And I have to commend our teachers, who even during the spring, when this was all thrown upon them in a 24-hour period, you know, teachers were going out of their way to try to make sure they got in contact with, with these kids any way they could, whether they had one phone number on record. I've heard stories of teachers driving by kids' homes just to make sure somebody was there, and they didn't take off and, you know, quarantine with another family member. So there, there was a lot of confusion in the spring about tracking down these kids and not losing them, slipping through the cracks. I don't think it's 100% at this moment. There's always going to be kids who aren't as attentive to this, but I do know, and this is not anything that he or I have done, our staff have done a remarkable job making sure that our kids are being connected every single day. And one of the benefits we have to that is, we can take attendance now. And if they're not there, we have mechanisms in order to get, get in contact with kids. Now, it doesn't mean certain kids aren't just going to turn their screen off, or if there's no supervision in the home at the time, but it's getting, the response to that is much quicker now. Having our teachers in the building too, and having the assistance of the administration in the building to help them out. But really, the emphasis on this is that the teachers are taking it personal to make sure that they don't let any kid out. I don't have the exact numbers. I know that's something we're trying to, we're tracking. I didn't bring it this evening, but that's something we can share.
Thank you. I would appreciate it maybe next time we can have that.
Thank you. That is it.
Thank you, Mr. Salazar. So I want to just add that, on the, on the points he was talking about, the contact tracing and getting the ducks in a row, I witnessed these two working on it many times that I've been into central office, and these two are doing a phenomenal job to get the contact tracing, to get all the information they need, to make the phone calls they need to, and, and, you know, assist staff, and to our staff too, for all they do, this is above and beyond what we expected for them, and we thank you very much for that, so. So we are at audiences number eight. If anyone wants to speak in front of us, we just ask that you say your name and, and address for the record. Do we have any audiences? You just come up to the counter, and you have a three-minute limit, and just say it.
I'm not a resident. I was a longtime resident. I'm a teacher at JFK. I don't know if you can suspend the rules. It's up to you.
Go ahead. Come on up and speak. Just say your name and, and name and address for the record, then I'll start three-minute timer for you.
My name is Bill Delaney.
Is that red light on?
It is, yeah. My name is Bill Delaney. I am a social studies teacher at JFK Middle School. It's my 20th year teaching. I said that today, making a video for Open House, and I, it hasn't sunk in yet, it's hard to believe. I just want to first thank Chris and Andy for their wonderful, wonderful job looking out for us. They're doing an excellent job. I'd like to thank the board for your public service. Certainly don't always agree, but anybody who serves the public, I have respect for. I would just like to speak about a couple of things. First, teachers are terrified that they will catch this virus. Now, we're doing everything we can, and we're trying to manage and survive as best we can. But the thought of going back full is absolutely terrifying. All experts say, all medical professionals say, that we're in for a bumpy ride coming up this fall and going into the winter. We may entertain conversations and have hope. It's always good to have hope. However, we must be realistic and really pay attention to the data as Mr. Dreszek is. Especially at JFK, with the renovation project going on right now, I do not see any option for us at JFK to be going back full in-person learning in a safe way. Second thing, the workload that we are putting... Second thing, the workload that we are putting forth as teachers, somebody said above and beyond, I thank you for recognizing that. It certainly is. We have a contract, and in that contract are certain hours, contracted hours. Teachers are notorious for bringing home work and working on weekends. Of course, we can't, we work more hours than our contracted hours every day. But this currently is taking it to a whole different level. Teachers are in, essentially, working two jobs, one, at school, with the contracted hours, two, at home. It's unbelievable, the stories that I, I hear from teachers. Full disclosure, I'm also the vice president of the ETA. So, we listen, and we're heroes. Right now, we're doing something very heroic, and I just have to tell the greater community about that. We want to serve the public. We got into this business, every teacher I know came into this business to serve, and that is what we do every day, just like the slogan says, we make a difference in Enfield every child, every day. We do. However, it has to be sustainable. We have families too, and they need attention as well. So just keep that in mind, when we talk about policies and procedures. We're also talking about teachers working unreasonable hours every day. Now, we do that because we have a job to do, and we have to keep this ship afloat. But just keep that in mind, that if we didn't work these hours, the extra hours, that this I also want to thank the students, they are troopers. This is not fun. This is a whole shift in paradigm of delivering instruction, a complete shift. I want to thank parents for having patience with us. It is not always easy, there are tech glitches, there's a different, there's a high learning curve here. We had hours of training for a complete paradigm shift in the way we do business. So we're still learning every day, we're making it, trying to make it better every single day. And there will be learning this year. This year will be productive for your children, but it'll be different, and it'll be a little bumpy, but we'll get through it. But we have to work as a team, and we have to be smart, and we have to be understanding. Thanks for letting me speak, thank you.
No, we thank you, and your staff, and, and everybody, so, we, we understand the difference, and, again, thank you, thank you for your, and God bless you all for all what you do for our town. Any other audiences? I declare audiences closed. Number 10 unfinished, no, number nine, board member, I always forget one, board member comments, we'll start with Ms. LeBlanc.
Okay, just a couple things, a couple weeks ago, I attended the Farm-to-Table Dinner for ERFC with Joyce and Scott. We also saw Mr. Salazar there, it was a wonderful time. Since the last Board of Ed meeting, everyone is joking with me, saying, when is the next ERFC meeting coinciding with the Board of Ed meeting, because we talked all about the ERFC tag sale last week? So if I can get the word out about ERFC, I'm happy to do so, they are a wonderful program. I also attended the football skills competition, football looks a little different this year, but it was fun to watch. They did a passing league, they did, they have the skills players doing a passing league, and they have a lineman challenge, and it's pretty fun to watch both, the lineman challenge is a lot of fun to watch, to see the linemen out there, actually getting to do something this season, since the passing league can't really involve them, so that's been good. And then, lastly, to Mr. Delaney, I was lucky enough to have, two of my kids had Mr. Delaney for four years, because that's, we used to loop, so they got him in seventh grade, and the impact that Mr. Delaney and that team of teachers with Ms. Bailing and Ms. Page, and at the time, Mr. Clark, until he went on to bigger and better things, was amazing, and left lasting impressions on a lot of kids at JFK. I can attest to what Mr. Delaney's saying, as far as how the teachers are working, and Mr. Salazar, I can, I can tell you the communication from the teachers, at Enfield High anyway, they were amazing in the spring, but they're amazing now, because they're emailing the parents and they're emailing the students. I don't think the effort wasn't there before, it's just that, now that we're all on a platform, and everything was able to get prepared in enough time over the summer, there's just so much more communication, and the expectations are pretty clear. At the high school anyway, Ms. Clark sent out a reminder of what she's expecting the kids to do, as far as having their cameras on and fading out backgrounds, but I can tell you, the teachers work a lot. I have the alert on my phone to get Power School notifications every time a grade changes. Those grades change 24/7, because teachers are updating and working from home. Because I think every day, they go in with a plan, and they have to roll with whatever's given to them. I think, you know, there's been a lot of kids that are gone out, and I think it's, it's probably a little bit challenging to have to manage, you know, the kids online, as well as the kids in class, and, and even my son has said, the amount of kids in classes is actually dwindling, since the positive cases. He will still go, I like that he goes to school every day, or those two days a week. But to Mr. Delaney's point, I, I feel for the teachers. It's the teachers, through the years, that have wanted me to get involved in the Board of Education. Some of them have done amazingly wonderful things for my family, as well as other families, and, and you guys are what really makes Enfield Public Schools what it is. I said it probably, I don't know, maybe four years ago, but it takes a village, and I've always been happy that and proud that I've had the teachers in Enfield Public Schools help be my village. I'm, you know, on my way out of the educational system here, I started my journey with three, and I have one left. But I really love what you said about teachers, and I believe you, and I see it, and I hear it, and I'm thankful for what you guys do every day, and I know the students are, and I know other families are. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blank, Ms. Hall.
The Head Start Policy Meeting was last week, the first one of the season, where they elected officers of the group. These officers are parents of the students at Head Start. And at Head Start, 91 of, of total, available of 102 openings, 91 are filled, and they have one remote class, the rest are in-person, in the hybrid mode, of course. And the average attendance for the in-person school is 94%, 75% attendance for the remote class. The Kite Annual Meeting was last Wednesday, and our esteemed superintendent was honored as a result of that meeting, acknowledging his good and extensive work for the Enfield Public School System. Next week, everybody agrees, Chris, sorry. Next week, there'll be a CREC meeting, and I thought you might be interested to know that because attendance through virtual meetings is so much better than when we have in-person meetings, that they're considering to make it a standard to continue virtual meetings for CREC Council. And I hope, a slightly light note, bringing together, since members have been criticized for talking too much about sports, I'd like to unite current events, sports, and academia. We have a book by the head of the Lakers team, who just won, and he is very supportive of education, and his foundation is actually creating and publishing these books, which is written by him, and very entertainingly illustrated by Nina Mata. So that brings us all together. Sports are important, books are important, students are important. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall, Ms. Thurston. No comments, Mr. Ryder.
I was actually going to mention the Kite Award, so again, congratulations to our superintendent for that. I think that is very well deserved, I was actually watching the Kite meeting, and that was the evening that we had the power issues. There was a storm that night, and I think it was right before that happened in the program where I lost power, and I was able to share the tweet and the information from Kite. And we're proud of you, so, very well deserved, thank you to Kite for that as well. The green Enfield Eagle masks are being pre-ordered by most, if not all, of the Enfield PTOs, so make sure you check your PTO Facebook pages, answer your PTO leads with however many masks you'd like, we're going to be doing an order at the end of this month for additional masks, so if you enjoy the comfort and shape and size of these masks, we will have another opportunity to purchase them, so just touch base with your school's PTOs. Speaking of which, Hazardville Memorial School has their PTO meeting tomorrow via Zoom. I also want to congratulate the HMS PTO and the HMS students, all my HMS Huskies, for last week's Jogtober event. They had set a goal of raising $3,000 by exercising in the backyard square, and they actually raised almost $4,000 with that effort, so, good job, go Huskies. Eli Whitney will be meeting again later this month, date TBD. You'll also, if you go to enfieldpto.com/hms or slash Eli Whitney, if you go to your school's website, you'll see that there's a calendar there. I know a lot of parents are asking about Picture Day. So there's two picture days, at least two picture days for every school, so for example, Eli Whitney's doing Cohort B Picture Day on October 30th, Cohort A's Picture Day will be November 2nd. And all of the schools, especially the elementary schools, are setting aside days for our remote learners, because they're not in school on either a Cohort A or B day. So for example, JFK, so if you're a distance-learning student at JFK, you are a member of the JFK community. Even if you're learning from home, and even if our buildings are closed, learning is still happening. So on Election Day, when JFK is not being used this year as a polling location, if you vote normally at JFK, you'll be at the Senior Center on Elm Street. So that's a day where Cohort D will be able to come in for, to take their class pictures, so they have the same experience as everybody else. Even though we're not going to school every day, we are learning every day. So check the calendar sections on enfieldpto.com for that, please. Dr. Barrios at JFK's done a great job sharing all his dates with me, and I get all the dates from all the schools, either from the principals themselves, from their newsletters. Every principal has reached out religiously every Friday through smore, every email that goes out to the, to the students and their families of every school community, I cut and paste and drop it on enfieldpto.com as well. So if you missed Mrs. Hunter's email from the HMS update last Friday, you can always go to the website, and then we leave, like, the last few posts up there, so if you're like, oh, that must have been two weeks ago, or Dr. Barrios mentioned that, you'll see, like, a month worth of communications. So we, we keep those there for parents to go back. Also speaking of JFK, JFKPTO is doing this promotion regarding the renovation called That's My Brick. So if you go to HMS, I'm sorry, enfieldpto.com/jfk, you'll see a link to That's My Brick. I can tell you that as the current Board of Education for 2019 through 2021, we have all chipped in, and we bought a brick, so there'll be a brick there commemorating this specific Board of Education, this two-year term. So this is an ongoing thing, it's going to happen over the next couple of years, while the renovation is happening, and you can buy a brick as a local business, as somebody who attended JFK, or as a family whose student, like mine, goes there now, I have a seventh grader at JFK. So we actually bought a separate brick from the Ryder family, and these bricks are going to first be placed around the new flagpole, wherever that lands after construction, and if we sell more and more and more and more bricks, and we've now used up all that area, we're going to make a path from the flagpole, say, to the main entrance, et cetera. So there is no limit, we don't have to cap it, as many bricks as we can sell that can be sponsored, we will find a place for them. They do something similar, I know, at Fenway Park, and we have a brick there as well, my family does, so you can, as you're walking around, you can, you can find that as well, it's very great. So that'smybrick.com/jfkpto, or enfieldpto.com/jfk. Also at JFK, they're doing Pink Out for October, on October 20th or 23rd, depending on your cohort, you can bring in a dollar, and you can wear pink to raise awareness and funds for breast cancer research and awareness, as October is that nationally, and you'll also see that the enfieldpto.com website is pink for the month of October. Lastly, I'll just mention that I know we're talking a lot about COVID and testing, so just so the Enfield residents that see this are aware, there are a couple of upcoming spots to get tested here in Enfield. So you can go to the Enfield Food Shelf between 9:00 AM and 1:00 PM, twice this week, Wednesday, October 14th, between 9:00 and 1:00, and Friday, October 16th, between 9:00 and 1:00. In the parking lot of the Enfield Food Shelf, Community Health Services will have some testing set up. So if you can't make it this week, on Wednesday or Friday at the Enfield Food Shelf, there's also another one, Wednesday, October 28th, and that's going to be at Enfield Loaves and Fishes, from 3:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon. So that's three opportunities right here in town, if you're feeling under the weather, or you just want to be safe, there's three opportunities to get tested. And then, Community Health Center at 5 North Main Street, they'll be available in the parking lot every Wednesday in November from 9:00 to 1:00, November 4th, November 11th, and November 18th, three consecutive Wednesdays. And there's others locally, but those are six examples right here in 06082, if you do want to get tested, you or your family. It's better to know. And thank you, Mr. Dreszek, thank you, Mr. Longy, thank you, everybody at Central Office, and especially to our teachers, and to our parents, and to our students that are doing their best to weather the storm, we appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder, Mr. LeBlanc, any comments?
Well, as I previously stated, obviously, I respect and understand guidelines that have been laid out due to this pandemic. That does not mean that those guidelines cannot be questioned, and one of the guidelines that was brought to my attention from a staff member was that when contact tracing is completed, anyone in direct contact with an individual who has tested positive for COVID-19 has to quarantine, and rightfully so. But if one of those individuals along the contact tracing line... But if one of those individuals along the contact tracing line who has to quarantine has other members of their household who also attends a school system, that individual can still attend school. So to break this down, and correct me at any point if I'm wrong, Student A has a class member that tests positive for COVID-19. Student A would then be in the contact tracing line for COVID-19, would therefore have to quarantine. And as I said, rightfully so. Student A goes home later that day and walks into his house, has dinner with his family, sits at the dinner table, talks with his brother, maybe hat, plays video games, whatever. Gets a phone call a little bit later on saying, hey, Student A, you have to quarantine now for 14 days because you were a direct contact. He does, or she does. That brother, sister, or member of the household goes to school the very next day. to me, it's just one of those, again, guidelines that you have a hard time really trying to understand. And this is only one of many that, in all honesty, don't really make that much sense. It makes sense to quarantine an individual who's been in direct contact with COVID-19. So don't misinterpret any of my words. What I'm saying is, you question why that member of the household is in quarantine in too. Because Student A may have passed it on to the other member of the household, and that other member of the household is walking into school next morning. And we repeat the process all over again because that member of the household was potentially exposed and could have COVID-19. So then you're starting an entire process all over again. So it's just something to consider. And again, it's just, you know, trying to find clarification on what some of these guidelines that are a little thin, what they're truly trying to achieve. And so, that's it with COVID tonight. I think that was talked about enough. Now on to some better news. In regards to a recent PTO meeting I attended, it was brought to my attention, and as Mr. Delaney brought forward tonight, teachers are working extraordinary hours outside of what their normal hours are. And to you, Mr. Delaney, personally, and to all your colleagues in JFK and beyond in our Enfield Public School System, thank you from the bottom of my heart. You guys, like, you said it best. Without doing what you're doing during these trying times, this would all fall apart in a heartbeat. It would all, it'd be over. So, to you all, thank you very, very much. And keep doing what you're doing. On top of that, I just want to let the community know that in regards to, and I remember when I was in school, I had a brainout, little plastic baggie with all the Box Top cutouts from the top of a cereal box. Well, things have changed, obviously. And that makes me feel even old. But there's now an app that you can download on your phone, and it's real simple. I'm pretty sure you can just type in Box Top App on the App Store. And once you're done with your shopping trip, you basically just scan your receipt, sign up, scan your receipt, and those Box Tops will now go to help support your school. So I encourage everybody in the community to do that as it's accessible enough with phones and easy enough, go do it. Let's see, what else? Ah, duh, duh, duh. it was mentioned a board member talks about sports too much. And I don't know who that could be. But with that being said, we all know fall sports are underway. And I just want to wish all our fall athletes the best of luck. Field hockey and boys soccer both had their senior night games this last week. Both came away with big wins. Girls soccer was having theirs tonight. So I look forward to finding out the result of that. And last but not least, for those that are interested at either JFK or Enfield High School, there was a recent list put out of clubs that are being held now. I'm all virtually, correct, Mr. Superintendent? Okay, so all virtually, but still being held. So if there's any students who have interest in, you know, what possible clubs they could join, the list is out there. I encourage them to go out and get involved. And those clubs will be back in person soon enough. And to a former board member, our Vice Chairman Wendy Costa, you were a great addition to this board. We will all miss you. And we wish you the best of luck in your new adventures over in Woodstock. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Mr. Salazar.
Yeah, one comment, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, just briefly. And I know I'm echoing everybody else's statements and sentiment, but I think it's worth repeating. Mr. Delaney, I did not have previously the opportunity to meet you. But now that I have this opportunity, I'd like to say it again. I also, like everybody else, again, I'm echoing everybody's feelings, I'm sure. But I do want to thank you. And as a representative of the Enfield Teachers Association, I want to make sure that you convey that to the members as well, every single one of them, that everything that is being done, I don't have children in school that I can, you know, get this information from, but I do hear it from my neighbors and yeoman's jobs. So very much appreciated, certainly personally appreciated. And I want to thank you and every other teacher in this district. That is it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salazar. Mr. Ongeyer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since our last meeting, I had the opportunity to schedule an appointment with Assistant Superintendent Longi. This was an introductory appointment, follow-up with my introductory meeting with Superintendent Dreszek. And Assistant Superintendent Longi, I want to thank you for making time in your very, very busy schedule to meet with me, especially in the days that we're living in today. And the purpose to meet with you was to just to understand your role better, to understand some of the challenges and the issues that our school department is faced with here today in Enfield. And so appreciated our time together. Our discussion focused primarily on those issues and what we're faced with. And, you know, he very well explained the challenges that we're faced with today, many of which we heard here today. But one thing he made me aware of was talking about staff, staffing and so forth. And this goes back to something that Superintendent Dreszek had said in the last meeting about with regard to substitute teachers. And saying that, you know, there's a critical shortage of substitute teachers that and I went back to our minutes. And Superintendent said, we use about 60 subs a week for the district. Last week, we got three. I mean, that's a huge, that's a huge difference from 60 to three. And that represents a critical shortage. And so I was thinking, well, what could we do? What could we do to help with that, help manage through that? And so what I was thinking is, you know, what could we do to increase the pool of substitute teachers? And I understood that until relatively recently that the state had changed the eligibility requirements for substitute teachers. They said that at that time, substitute teachers who had an associate's degree and above could substitute teach. And they changed those requirements to having now a bachelor's degree and above to be a substitute teacher. So with that in mind, and then I understood that when that change was made, though, that we lost some very good and high-quality substitute teachers who had associate's degrees. So I was thinking, would it be possible, as a recommendation, would it be possible that we could get a waiver from the state to allow substitute teachers who have associate's degree to re-enter that pool and help through this crisis situation that we're dealing with today? So Assistant Superintendent Longi, you said that you thought that was a good idea and that you would take it to the Superintendent. I don't know if you had a chance to speak with him about it. But has any progress been made on that at all? Oh.
Go ahead, if you want to answer.
We have not looked into that at all. Not yet.
Okay, okay. So, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if there's anything that we, is there anything that we could do to help with that?
Well, I'm hoping that our state reps and state senator are watching, because that would be a great question for them to bring back to the State Board of Ed. So I reach out to Senator Kissel, Representative Arnon, Representative Hall. I know you guys are all running for reelection. But a phone call to the State Board of Education would be greatly appreciated if you could get that message from us to them that we are looking for this, and it would help us along. So I put that out there, but go ahead, continue.
Well, that was about it. I also want to say that I very much enjoyed our meeting. It was good to find that we had shared some things in common. And that's always good to be able to talk about some things that you have in common. So thank you again, Mr. Longi. Appreciate it, and I look forward to continue working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Ongeyer. So I did have another mask to wear, but it was a little too tight. I don't know if you can zoom in on that. It's a little eaglet from Stowe Learning Academy. Here he comes. I got this before, I made my rounds before Labor Day to the different schools, and they gave me this as a little present. I tried to wear it today, but it's a little too tight. So if anyone else has masks they want to show off, I'll do that for you. My right-hand, Ms. Vice Chairman Costa, for the time she served on this board, I can't, there's no words to say all the great work she did. She took on, she was a member of the Joint Facilities Committee and took on assignments there. She was the chairman of the Finance Committee and did a great job with that. She started and worked very hard on the reopening committee that we had over the summer. And she made phone calls, did all this homework, did, you know, checked on all the different things and worked very hard at that to get our schools to reopen. So for that, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. You were my right hand, and I thank you, and the entire boards thank you for your service. And God bless you for what you've done, and hope all goes well with your move. And again, to Mr. Dreszek, on winning the award from Kite, I was on the meeting for five minutes, and then my power went off till 2:00 in the morning. So just so you know, I don't have any pull either on getting power back. I was out till 2:00 in the morning. So with that, you guys pretty much hit all my other things. So we will continue with number 10, unfinished business. We have none. Number 11, new business will remain on the table. Correct, Mr. Salazar?
Yes, we have not had a meeting of the policy committee yet.
Okay, so we'll keep that one on the table. So number 12, Board Committee reports. Curriculum, Mr. LeBlanc.
Curriculum, since the last Board of Ed meeting, has not held a meeting or next meetings this Thursday, October 15th, 5:30.
Okay, thank you. Finance, I'll speak for Ms. Costa. There's a finance meeting next Monday, I believe. Next Monday, yes. Policy, Mr. Salazar.
Likewise, we have not had a meeting since our last Board of Ed meeting. The next meeting is scheduled for the 26th.
Okay. Leadership, we have none. Joint Facilities met last week. And next Monday, the company we hired for the master plan will be making a presentation to the council at 6:00 next Monday. And with that, also, the roof at Henry Barnard is 100% complete. And I believe they're over there this weekend doing the chimney repairs. So that should be also complete if the weather held out for them. JFK is meeting this Thursday. Joint Security isn't meeting until December, I believe. Joint Insurance is also meeting in December. And that's all we have for committees. So number 13, approval of minutes. Regular Board of Ed meeting minutes, September 29, 2020. Moved by Ms. Hall, seconded by Ms. Thurston. Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. LeBlanc.
I saw something Joyce did. I'm so proud of myself. At the end of the note--
And Ms. Alackey is watching, I hope, so.
At the end, it just says the special virtual meeting of September 29, 2020. Should just be changed to the regular meeting.
Yes, we were, first time we were live, so thank you for that. So as changed, any other corrections? Show of hands, all in favor? I have eight in favor, zero against. 14 approval accounts and payroll, we have none. 15 correspondence and communications.
If I have something--
Please.
To the Board of Ed and Administration, this is from Wendy. Thank you very much for this sympathy and it was very thoughtful and kind of to all. This has been very hard on me, and it will help me remember my brother and the kindness of the board and the actions that Wendy Costa. I'll just take a minute to say that I was able to have some conversations with Wendy over the summer, towards the end of the summer, before this happened. And we had a great conversation. And I always wish we could have worked, you know, had the full term worked together. I think that she had some good ideas. She was very smart with her numbers and looking at things from a critical standpoint. You have to see that on the Joint Facilities, I have to see it on Finance. But I wish Ms. Costa well on her return. And I hope to have a safe and healthy one.
Thank you. Number 16, executive session, we have none. Number 17, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Ms. Thurston, seconded by Mr. Salazar. Any discussion? All in favor? Eight in favor, zero against. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Have a good night.